I didn't. I always find time. Well, since it's time to start and I'm already standing, let somebody else join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Future board meetings, May 24th, June 14th, and June 28th, all here at 6:00 P. M. Keep your eyes open and your schedule clear, we may have more. There are no, I guess there are a couple revisions to the agenda under recognition, but nothing else that I see. So we'll just start right in on that public recognition. The first thing I'm going to do is read a long list of donations made for the Sharp Creek Robotics Team going to Dallas. For the sake of time, I think I'm just gonna recognize the names of the people and not necessarily keep reading the whole line across. We have Jones Contracting, Gary Lewis, Liz Oosley, Steve and Kathy Hawper, American Eagle Landscaping, Ron and Rhonda Bear, Tom Gillespie, Giveheart Holdings, Kirtland Automotive, John and Judy Elsroth, Terry and Carla Crum, Troy and Rachel Guyer, Donna Yentis, Mary Ann Mylan, Kathy Steele, Gillan Waters, Terri and Jackie Thompson, an anonymous donation, Thomas Steinman, American Legion Post, Vandermark Duffy Enterprise, Gary and Steve Runkel, Manchester Family Dentistry, Cindy Hook, Runkel Farm, Susan Mattern, Steve and Deanna Hakama, Atlantic Track, Grand Staff, Pizza King, UAW Local 685, Edward Jones, Barb Beal, Adeline, Amy Hollenstein, Crossroads Bank, Crossroads Investment, a second one for Rachel Guyer, Diana and Roger Rapp, James and Jenna Singer, Allison Masterson, Masterson Massage, Dennis and Judy McKill, Cyders Realty, Larry and Cindy Hoffman, Chris Stephanatis, Dwayne Wagner, Amy Cyders, Doris Paul, Paperworks, Stan and Kathy Leland, Anne Andrew and Emily Beal, Dana Hook, and another cash, anonymous cash donation. Like to thank all of those people, that's a very impressive list of people who have gotten behind our Sharp Creek Robotics Team and making sure that they can go in the world's competition.
They're right now.
And they're there now, yes. Also under donations, we have a recommendation to approve a $3,000 donation from First Farmers Federal, or First Farmers Bank and Trust, a recommendation to approve a $100 donation from Pam, I'm gonna butcher this name, Myget Finch, sorry Pamela, for Northfield Robotics. Recommendation to approve a $17.70 donation from General Mills, Box Tops for Education for Southwood Elementary Student Use. Recommendation to approve a $100 donation from Sally Arvin in memory of Mary Lou Kendall for WMAP. For those of you don't know, Mary Lou Kendall passed away recently and was a longtime employee of Wabash Miami area program. Recommendation to approve the individual donations from Sharp Creek that I just read. Recommendation to approve a $50 donation from Mike and Anne Swanson, also in memory of Mary Lou Kendall for Wabash Miami area. My, Wabash gotta be amazing. Recommendation to approve the donation, $50 from Robin Clare, $50 from Helen Elrod, $100 from Debbie Carter, $50 from Elle Foy, $250 from Greg Garner, all in memory of Ross Trump for Northfield Band. And a recommendation to approve a $50 donation from Dawes Angus Farms slash Helen Dawes, also in memory of Mary Lou Kendall. And that is our list of donations. Motion to accept.
I move to approve all these recommendations. We'd like to thank them all.
Motion second to approve the recommendations that I've just read, or the donations that I've just read, all in favor, say aye. Okay, school recognition.
I'll go ahead and do that tonight, Mr. Daisy. So, Mr. Boone was originally up for tonight, but our spotlight from Southwood Elementary, they were not able to come, and he actually is working on interviews, and so that's what's happening right now with him. So I will go ahead and do the recognitions, and then I also have a picture for our staff spotlight that I'll put up here in just a few minutes. But first of all, Mr. McDaniel from Southwood has a few of them. Southwood Junior Senior High School would like to recognize Katie McClure for coordinating that Ninth Flight 5K. As a physical education teacher, Mr. McClure regularly speaks of the benefits of a healthy lifestyle. The Ninth Flight 5K was a fun event to get students outside with the opportunity to run or walk the event. Regardless, students and staff were outside and active. Special congratulations goes to James Unger, grade seven, and Jacob Beachler, grade eight, for shredding their competition and placing first and second respectfully. Way to go, guys. And I will say, Mr. McDaniel did not put this in here. We challenged him to be number one, he was number three though, but he led the seventh grade and eighth grade team, but he was actually number three. Mr. McDaniel also said, "Southwood High School would like to recognize the efforts of Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Stebler, and members of the student congress. They organized the 2022 Penny Wars to raise money for Teacher Appreciation Week and help organize the first annual Southwood carnival. Students were able to play games, get their faces painted, and participate in other activities after the 5K. We appreciate their efforts." The Southwood community would like to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week, specifically the outstanding educators of Southwood Junior Senior High School. As principal, I am proud of late nights grading and planning, the efforts of to help students, the willingness to do whatever it takes for students to be successful and have an outstanding educational experience. Thank you to all teachers this week and every week. Mr. McDaniel has one more. According to the U.S. News and World Report, Southwood Junior Senior High School earned high national ranking in the 2022 Best High Schools. To be part of the exclusive group schools are judged upon the number of students taking and passing one of our AP exams, proficiency, and standardized tests, and graduation rate. This award is a testament of the hard work of the staff and students at Southwood Junior Senior High School. Way to go, nights. Mr. Snyder at Northfield Junior Senior High. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, so a special thank you to all of our staff. Thank you to Central Office Andrew Dixon for lunches and for all the treats different parents provided. This week is Nurses Week. Thank you to our MSD nurses, especially with all that added work due to COVID-19 the last couple of years. I was hoping we won't have to use that word. Thank you. Mr. Snyder. Mr. Snyder also said, "Congratulations to our Northfield Junior High Robotics Team, Mason and Logan Lyons, Cody Geiser and Logan Graff worked together to pull off, to pull off a 36th place finish out of the top 500 middle school teams in the world last week in Dallas, Texas. Congrats on a fantastic season. Good luck this week to our elementary robotics teams." I will say that one more time, 36th place out of 500 middle school teams. Very good. But I would like to go ahead and recognize, because it wasn't gonna work out because of spring sports and things like that, for our staff spotlight. So I have a picture here, and I will read. So on the left there is Chris Stephanatis, Dean of Students, and on the right is teacher Jane Kendall, kindergarten teacher. So, teacher Jane Kendall nominated by Dean of Students Chris Stephanatis. Chris is stepping into a new role. She has come in with such a positive energy and working very hard to make a profound academic and social impact on our students and staff. She is supportive and cares deeply for our students and staff. She has shown grace and kindness to our students when they need it most. She brings such a wealth of experience to our staff, and we are lucky to have her influence each, influence each of us in a positive way. And so again, on the left there is Mrs. Stephanatis, who's the spotlight tonight. Unfortunately, we're not able to have her present, but we did get a picture so we could show, and we appreciate Jane Kendall, kindergarten teacher, for nominating her. So I guess they won't be able to talk right now. Like we normally do. So that's what I have, our recognitions and spotlight tonight.
All right, so now at this point, we have a public comment for agenda items only, if there's anybody that wants to say anything. So we'll move on. Approval of minutes from our last meeting on April 26, 2022.
A motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting, April 21st.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes from our last meeting, all in favor, say aye. Okay, financials, claims.
Second.
Motion second to approve claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll.
Our normal payroll will be short-lived, because we're getting towards the end of the year, so we'll start getting those ECA counts for the building levels and the spring sports ending, and then obviously that will lead into summer school, so we'll probably see a higher than normal payroll for, um, for two.
And then the pay increases.
That won't take effect until?
T1.
Yes. And that would be a small fraction, probably a little bit, but.
Motion to approve payroll for this period.
Second.
Motion second to approve payroll, all in favor, say aye. Financial summary.
Just a couple things. End of the month for April, balances, so you can see, again, good numbers here, education fund approaching that 8 million mark, which is good. Our COPS grant, we finally finished. If you remember what that money was used for, that was used for the updating the intercom and alarm systems within our buildings. And that was a $345,000 grant that we received to help us fund a majority of that project. So that, we're done with that grant. That's all I have about end of balances. The other thing I showed you was just start, it's time to start thinking about 2023 budget. And so I mapped out the calendar of dates. Again, this is nothing that's set in stone, but we do have statutory guidelines or deadlines, I guess, for certain things to be finalized and submitted by a certain amount of times. So I map it out based off of those due dates, and we kind of followed the same mantra here the last five or six years as far as that spacing or pacing is concerned of when things are done. So I don't need to go over that, but that's just more for your defense.
We'll move on to personnel. Under resignation, we have Tracy Snyder, bus driver for North, effective towards the end of May. Aaron Strange, teacher at Southwood Elementary. Cheryl Hall Schaefer, bus page, special needs. Those are both effective at the end of the school year. Employment, we have Casey Stoffer, principal at Southwood Elementary School, for the beginning of the next school year. Jacob Watkins, teacher at Sharpwood Elementary, Sharp Creek Elementary, at the beginning of the next school year. Tracy Kennedy, summer secretary, and that date, that start date is to be determined yet. Hillary Elsroth, varsity head girls' basketball coach, and Brandon Baker, junior varsity head girls' basketball coach at Northfield. I think that's just a swap of those two positions, and that is to happen immediately. Amy Long, secretary, summer secretary at Southwood High School. Megan Ellis, summer secretary at Southwood High School, and retirement Beth Egan, teacher at Southwood High School. Leave, number 139, and you see the dates there. Transfer, Mary Norman, transferring from sixth grade teacher to fifth grade teacher at Southwood Elementary, effective the next school year. Kim Rutledge, transferring from music teacher to elementary classroom teacher at Southwood Elementary, effective the beginning of next school year. Jessica Brewer, transferring from computer science teacher at North, Southwood High School and Northfield High School to computer science, earth science, and Spanish at Northfield, effective the beginning of next school year. And Joseph Mitchell, transferring from Spanish teacher. Sorry?
Sorry.
Oh, Joseph Mitchell, transferring from Spanish teacher to junior high science ICP at Northfield, effective next school year.
And if I could say a few words before, first of all, well, you know what, I guess let's go ahead and vote on the first, I'm sorry, and then I'll.
I move, we approve HR.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve HR, all in favor, say aye. Now you meet.
Well, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Casey Stoffer, new Southwood Elementary principal. It's one of those situations too where he's coming back home, and so welcome. I don't know if you want to say anything, you didn't have to have a speech prepared.
No, I'm very blessed and humbled by the opportunity, and I know, I'm extremely excited, I know my family is, except to get back into Wabash. We have 300 kids, and they'll be going to Southwood Elementary and our Junior Senior High School as well, so.
Congratulations, thank you. So it's been good to meet you and a little bit more about you, and I have a long list of things.
Oh, yeah. There's things to learn. I'm ready to do it.
And actually, Casey's gonna be coming to our admin meeting tomorrow to introduce, I don't know if he's gonna stay, he's willing to stay, and then also introduce him to the staff on the 17th, I believe, of May in the morning, so we get started right away since we have this approved. So welcome back, congratulations.
Thank you.
Jacob Watkins, another person that, Northfield grad, coming back home. And I actually had the privilege to be his principal his freshman sophomore junior year, and then I came to Central Office his senior year. But went to school and has one year under your belt now, or two years?
One year.
One year under your belt?
A whole one.
And so, welcome to Jacob, and then his fiancee is what you want to introduce.
Yeah, this is Abby Burns, better have to be on June 11th coming up, so we got planning under her belt, but yeah, just super excited to be back in the community. I mean, I live right in Wabash, and it's just super excited to be part of this team, be part of this community, build here again.
Yeah. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but Casey talked about having three kids that are coming to school and stuff. Not right away.
Don't plan on leaving anytime soon.
What do we have Jacob teaching?
Jacob is teaching sixth grade at Sharp Creek Elementary.
Super excited.
That's all right, we won't make your employment contingent upon the number of kids.
I did not say that, I was just pointing out Casey's situation.
We have an office pool together.
And I do want to mention though too, so we do have a retirement of Beth Egan, and in her retirement letter, I want to just share just a little bit. As you are aware, this is just to Mr. McDaniel, but then she also wrote me too, and I'll share that a little bit, but as you're aware, this year is my 43rd year teaching for the Metropolitan School of District of Walbush County. I've been a member of the Southwood staff for all 43 of those years. My first three years, I spent mornings at Southwood High School, and afternoons at Southwood Elementary or LeFountain Elementary. The next three years were at Southwood High School in the morning and Northfield in the afternoon, so she's been at a lot of our schools. For the last 37 years, including this year, my entire day has been spent at Southwood, and that is just how I have loved it. And I also wanted to mention another email that she sent to me that she kind of reiterated some of the same things with a lot of other things that she mentioned, but she said, "Southwood High School and teaching have been my life, but I am ready to see what the next journey will bring. Please convey to the Board of Education for me that it has been an honor and privilege to work for MSD Walbush County." So, really pretty cool, that's 43 years, so appreciate all the hard work that she's done in making a difference for kids and families, and that's a long time. So we wish her well in her retirement.
Wish her well. Okay, under reports, Hartland Career Center. Do you have anything on that?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Superintendent's report, Mr. Keith Hager.
I'm not gonna do a report, during the new business, I'm gonna do more of a little history about the 1003 flexibility resolution thing, so I thought I'd just say that for that part.
Curriculum and instruction report.
You know, in the honor of spring, I like to come tell you about all the testing we're doing and complain about it, but I do, we actually did something positive, and so I should give them their fair shake. We started iLearn, for those of you maybe remember that's iStep, right, it's a new version of iLearn, or iLearn is a new version of iStep. And they kept promising they'd give us our scores earlier and earlier, and of course, Kobe Irving, whatever. And we have already started receiving our iLearn scores for this year for some students. And so that will be a game changer, if we can actually get that information while we still have the kids in the same classes and the same stuff, and so teachers will be able to log in and see how certain kids did and stuff, and so it's not 100% of a pat on the back, but you know what, they, I feel like that's a good stuff for us, and so we'll try to make use of that. Don't count on any more of this, but I thought I at least had one.
All right. We'll move on to new business. We have a recommendation to approve the resolution of the 1003 flexibility waiver request.
All right, so I want to explain how we got to this situation, all right? And I, some of you know, some of you do not know, so House Bill 1093, it just was an education matters. At the very end of this short session, the legislators added this part at the very end of the session, and this is House Bill 1098. Establish the definition for Virtual Student Instruction Day and requirements for Virtual Student Instruction Days. Provides that a public school may conduct not more than three virtual student instructional days that do not meet the established requirements. I love all this wording. Provides that a public school that does not comply with these provisions may not count a student instructional day toward the 180-day student instructional day requirement. Allows the department to waive these requirements. Provides that instructional days tuition support distribution formula taken into account only certain schools and grades within a school corporation if fewer than all the schools fail to conduct a minimum number of student instructional days. Can you read that again? So when they put that in there, they were talking about three days, and that's in here a little bit later, but they were talking about they would only allow three asynchronous days of e-learning, okay? And so after that came about, the Indiana Department of Education had to basically look at, interpret what that really meant. So then in April 26th, they sent Virtual Student Instruction Days, a 180-day requirement. They tried to explain a little bit, they didn't explain everything, because they said there were still some things going on, but there were two waiver options. The first waiver option was the 180-day instructional day waiver request submission. Waiver requests must be submitted to the DOE within 10 business days of extraordinary circumstance cancellation. A JOT form is forthcoming for the 2022, 2023 school year. The big question right now in this state is, what is extraordinary circumstance cancellation? Dr. Chris Coon and myself went to the Indiana School Boards Association meeting a couple weeks ago, and they did mention that extraordinary circumstance cancellation could be inclement weather days, like we normally have. So in other words, we could have more than those three asynchronous e-learning days if we applied for a waiver. But other people are saying, no, those are not going to count. So the other option was the 1003 flexibility waiver request. That request has been in the books for a couple years now, but when schools were applying for those waivers, basically the State Board of Education, they were denying, denying all of that. They have now started to approve them, and the DOE actually, in their memo, actually told us that that was one way of doing that. So speaking with a lot of other superintendents and talking about it, this would be the route to go. So that's why the resolution that you have before you is a resolution for me to even apply for the 1003 flexibility waiver request, we have to have a resolution. And so I won't read this all to you, as I know you don't want me to, but I will just share a little bit of information. So the first few bullet points talks about how many minutes that we have. So what we're looking at is the waiver request, because the law says we have to have 180 days, the flexibility grant says that we can do something different than days, we can do minutes. And for high school, juniors seven through 12, you are required to have 360 minutes per day or six hours. In the elementary, since we don't count, like kindergarten is not required, they go from first grade to sixth grade, it's 300 minutes or five hours. And so doing our calculation, which is already on the DOE, it's called the LINK, it tells us how many hours that we have. And so right now, K through six, it averages, we are 8100 to 11,700 minutes, or 27 to 39 days over the requirement. Now, we're not gonna cut any of those days out, but, and then for Northfield and Southwood, it's 7200 minutes or equals 20 days. White's is a little less of 3875 or equals to 10 days. So what the proposal here is for this, not to worry about the instructional days, but we would use the waiver, and if the DOE has to accept it, I mean, they have to look at it, and then they have to send it to the State Board to approve all this. So if approved, we would continue to have our three built-in e-learning days, but we would not, no, I'm sorry, flex days, which are for professional development, but we would not have e-learning during those days. And then any inclement weather days, we would go ahead and have e-learning, except if we have the rare situation where we have three, four, or five in a row, not having those is e-learning days, but the teachers would still be working during those days. And at the very end, it does say that the number of teacher contract days shall remain unchanged at 183, so that does not change at all. So what this does again then, this allows us to be able to use minutes instead of days, and so we would still be in compliance with the new law of House Bill 1093.
You say we will not use that e-learning days?
For what?
For e-learning.
Well, we would use e-learning for inclement.
So you're saving them for the.
Well, and really, we don't even have to save them, because we won't have to save them, we won't have to save them, because we have the flexibility now. So it's a little confusing, right? So let's go back again. So the DOE, I maybe actually had this written up here, but there are two different options. Either we could do a waiver, which they, which is still in debate, if there's a waiver that they would even do for e-learning or for inclement weather delays, so that's one option, and I don't think that's gonna be one of those things, because weather for us in Indiana is not extraordinary. Now, if it's a blizzard with 30 inches of snow, or if it's a tornado that destroys things or something like that, or a flood, or something like that. So we would go to the flexibility, which if that is, if that is approved, then we can just do our plan. And there's no other things that we have to do, because it's already, it's already a waiver that would be approved. I'm not saying it's gonna be approved, but they have approved other ones that are very similar to what I gave you in this, this is like a JOT form I have to fill out. And I just basically gave you the JOT form of what it looks like, because it talks about our professional development, what we've done so far with our focus. And Tim's kind of led that with our, with our admin team, and we would continue that with our teachers, and there's other things, it's all in here. So ask questions if I did not explain that. So I'm, my request is that you would approve this resolution, that I would go ahead and submit this to the DOE on their JOT form.
Too many kids aren't listening to that, so they're growing 27 days extra.
Are you saying that's what you would have heard when you were saying? I would have heard that. You know, we're here to educate and do the best we can and give them more than what they even need. Why move to the resolution?
Well, sorry.
Motion second to approve a resolution for the 1003 flexibility waiver, all in favor, say aye. So now we have a recommendation to approve an overnight extended out-of-state trip for Southwood eighth grade history and English classes to Washington, D.C. for May 16th through the 19th of next year.
You were ready to vote, no.
It hasn't happened yet, so I can still vote yes. It hasn't happened yet, so I can still vote yes. I move to approve. Second. Motion and second to approve the recommendation or the, the request for Southwood eighth grade history and English to Washington, D.C., all in favor, say aye. We have no unfinished business, no board policy. Again, I'll extend the offer to public comment for any items. Welcome aboard, Mike. Any items from board members? All right.